We'll call this meeting the Wayne County Commissioners to Order. Any additional corrections to the minutes? Not the Chair would so entertain a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, please call the roll.
Denny Burns.
Aye.
Mary Ann Butters.
Aye.
Ken Pous.
Aye, motion carries. We have claims of 42920 in the total amount of $268,125.74. Chair would so entertain a motion to approve the claims.
Move for approval.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Denny Burns.
Aye.
Mary Ann Butters.
Aye.
Ken Pous.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Ron, looks like you're up.
Got about four things just to advise you of that I think you've received. First of all, I've done a redraft of the proposed lease with the currently leased the Wayne County Health Center, Inc.
Right.
And that is in their hands as well as ours for review and comments. So if you take a look at it, like I said in my email, it's 31 pages of text, but you might want to just go through the.
I liked your shorter version.
My Cliff notes of the issues that were raised by the Health Center in reviewing the first draft, and then there's several deletions that are, you know, since that first draft was done in December, things have settled out a little bit. We now know that there's been the award of the, for the service area competition to WellCare, and so take a look at that. I also distributed a proposed consultants agreement with Bob Warner, had one typo on the first page. Other than that, he was, he texted me, he's okay with it. I don't know if you had any questions.
Did you see the one this morning of the address change?
Yeah, that was the typo.
That was the typo, okay, all right. All right.
I mean, I don't know if there's any urgency, but.
His last day is May the 8th, so we've got.
One more meeting.
Another one more meeting, right.
So if you want to take a look at that, and then if there are any questions on it, like I say, he's reviewed it, maybe you haven't.
All right, Denny or Mary Ann, do you have any questions about Mr. Warner's?
I think we could, I've read it, I think it's okay, we should approve it.
Mary Ann, do you have any comments or questions on Bob's consulting contract?
Oh, as we've agreed, and I see no reason to hold it.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, well, the Chair would so entertain a motion to enter into a consulting agreement with Bob Warner, who is our current county engineer, who is retiring on May the 8th, and this is a consulting agreement with Mr. Warner's company to work with us on a temporary basis until we're able to hire a new county engineer. So Chair would so entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns.
Aye.
Mrs. Butters.
Aye.
Mr. Pous.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, I've got the agreement here in triplicate. Denny, you said Beth has a facsimile signature stamped for you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, she does.
Do we have your permission to use it?
And she has permission to sign my name with her initials.
Okay, fine.
Okay, all right, you both agree then, we can, Denny, we can use your stamp, and Beth can sign your name and initial it then, Mary Ann. Okay, we'll sign those, all right. Did either one of you have any questions or comments currently at this time on Ron's summary on the lease? I thought he did an excellent job, loved the color coding and everything, that worked very well with all the changes.
Yeah, it was just, I did a red line, and it was a sea of red, there was no way you were going to make any head or tail of it.
I know, I looked at your red line, and I said, "We changed every line on that one." Okay, if you have any comments, if not.
Oh, I meant with that one, I had to print that out, I was going blind trying to read that, and I printed it out, but I ran my home computer completely out of ink. Can we have another week to review that?
Yeah, there's no.
Oh, we got, yeah, plenty of time, yeah.
Yeah, just give me your comments. I let it be clear to Rick Boston that this was going out simultaneously to the Health Center folks, as well as to our people too. So council got a copy of it, and so we're still in the mode of entertaining comments and questions, so absolutely no problem. The other informational item, you got late yesterday, and you may not have had time to take a look at it, but council raised the issue probably two, a couple of meetings ago, about what, if anything, do we have to do in, to end the collection of the .25% local option special purpose tax that was originally levied to fund the construction of the jail? And I've since followed up on that, and I gave you a memo that indicates pretty much what we have to do, and that is council itself has to adopt an ordinance essentially reestablishing our other local option income taxes, the certified shares expenditure rate at 1%, our economic development expenditure rate at .25%, and then eliminating that .25% special purpose tax. That has to be done prior to August 31st of this year, and if done by that time, will become effective on October 1st of this year. That means that we will have collections that will follow through July, August, and September, which based upon our certified shares amount, that would be just a little over $800,000 or thereabouts, I had the number, and that, 823,000, okay. And that is, that is, I didn't understand that, but I talked to Mr. Van Dort at the Department of Local Government Finance, and he said, "That's the way it works." He said, "When, originally when you enacted the tax, you had to wait till the next effective date to start collecting it, so once you rescind the tax, and it goes away, as it has to, because the bonds will have been retired in July, you get the benefit of whatever incremental runout you have until the decision becomes effective." So I've given you my feelings, the only thing I would say is I do not think that those monies can lawfully be used for any purposes other than the default purposes in the statute, which is the maintenance, rehabilitation, construction of county roads, highways, and bridges, so those monies would not be available, in my opinion, for the, any of the enhancements to the jail that the sheriff might wish to have.
Yeah, okay.
But that obviously would give you some counsel and some funds to move forward into.
Couldn't have come at a better time, really.
Yeah, and again, I made the, our certified share amounts roughly $274,500 a month for that special purpose tax. I am assuming that we're not going to collect at that rate, given the COVID-19 impact on employment, so I'll talk with the auditor, and we'll try to just kind of get a better idea, see where things are shaking out.
Sure, okay.
So if you have any questions on that, there's really, next steps will be for me to get together, put together the templates for the ordinance and the notice of hearing on the ordinance. I have the, DLGF is very good about reviewing your proposed ordinances and paperwork in advance, so you don't make a mistake, get it submitted, and then find it, there's something that they won't, they won't accept, so we, like I say, we have until August 31st, but I'll try to get the draft templates prepared yet this month, or yet in May.
Very good, very good.
And then finally, we have, I forwarded you a draft of the Elder Bearman Maintenance Contract that we would propose to enter into with EDC. There's only one issue that's come, come to the forefront, and I discussed it briefly with Jeff Plaster, and I think commissioners need to have their thoughts considered too, and that is, they would like to extend the maintenance agreement through 2024. We've traditionally been reticent to enter into any contractual commitments beyond the end of the, of the contract period, which is this year. I think Jeff seemed to feel like even if they were to repeal the edit tax, there would be enough of consolidated edit to cover this obligation that would still be available, but I throw that out there for your consideration and your comments and thoughts.
I guess my thinking would be, and I certainly don't want to speak for council, but I don't think they're looking to do away with.
No, I don't think so.
The tax, so that it's going to be there, so I guess I wouldn't have any problem, but that, I'd kind of leave that up to council, because they'd be the one that would make that change there.
Right.
And, but I haven't heard any discussion at all of not doing that.
No.
I think if they did, it'd be a major mistake for the community.
Well, I don't, I don't mean to suggest there has been, it's just that, you know, in the past, we've been.
Right, we've not done that.
If they wanted to extend, enter into, if the EDC wanted to enter into an obligation to extend it beyond the term of their current contract with the county, for instance, auto lease, whatever.
We've had the same thing there.
They would have to come and get commissioners' approval and council approval, so that's the only issue. If you, again, take a look at it, if there's something there that you have a question on, I did run it by Steve Higginbotham, because I wanted to make sure that I understood exactly what kind of services the county was providing directly, as well as those services that we are, have been reimbursing the EDC for, and I think originally it started out, Bob Warner had a pretty accurate estimate that we were trending at about $6,000 a month. Since then, it's gone down considerably to where we're, I think annually, looking around $45,000.
$45,000, $45,000, right.
$45,000, $45,000, so.
Mm-hmm.
So that's really all I've got at this point.
Okay, very good.
He's been busy.
He has been very busy, yes. Steve is currently with the pre-bid people, he'll be here in just a little bit, he's getting that started. As you know, we had the pre-bid.
You're breaking up, are you getting broken up too, Denny?
Uh, no, hearing him fine, you're in fact getting broken up, Mary Ann.
Were you able to hear me okay, Denny?
I can, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard you, Ron.
Okay.
Yeah, Mary Ann, you are breaking up.
Okay, maybe my batteries, I'll change phones.
But there at the end, you were doing very well there, when you talked about changing your batteries.
I want to see that in a minute.
Hey, Mary Ann, we're kind of laughing that you're going to change your batteries, you know?
That's right.
And get you charged up so you're up to 100%, see?
Get more scans.
Oh, guys. Oh, Beth, why don't we move on to a couple of things that you have, and that'll give Steve more time, because he will be here in.
I think I'll just kind of park back here.
Okay, now you're breaking up a little.
I'm breaking up, and how's this sounding? Must be the lines some out.
When you, when you lock, yeah, it's, it's breaking up.
Hmm, interesting.
We'll have it checked before this afternoon.
We'll have to have it checked.
I have to go to a wired phone.
Yeah, all right, go ahead, Beth.
He switched out the conference call phone yesterday, so.
Oh, did he? Well, this is a new, this is a new, this is a new phone.
We can't hear, Beth.
Uh, Beth, they can't hear you.
Okay, is it better now?
Can you hear her now?
A little bit.
The speaker's right here.
Yeah.
Is this any better?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, all right.
So commissioners, you signed a resolution to transfer an unneeded law enforcement card to Milton. Milton did provide a counter resolution, I do have copies of it, at this time it's unsigned because it was passed during the Zoom meeting, so if you're comfortable with that, I will ask Jack Martin.
I'm not hearing that.
Milton passed a.
I'm sure Mary Ann can't hear her either.
Are you able to hear me?
Pick that up and hold it.
Denny?
In front of you.
Yeah.
Now, Beth, try it now.
Okay, can you hear me now, Denny?
Oh, yeah, that's perfect, it's perfect.
Well, I've had Beth pick it up, and she's holding it right in front of her now, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's perfect.
Guys, if you didn't hear, Milton offered their counter resolution for acceptance of the law enforcement card that we no longer need, and if you're willing to accept an unsigned copy, because it came from a result of a Zoom meeting, I could ask Jack Martin to work with Craig and get the transfer done, Terry Craig can get the transfer done.
Absolutely, let's do this, I move for approval.
Okay, okay, Beth, call the roll.
Denny Burns.
Uh.
Mary Ann Butters. Ken Pous.
Aye, motion carries.
So last week, I asked you to approve the local drug-free communities funding from the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. That was unusual. This week, we actually have the breakdown of who the local partnership decided to fund. That was given to all of you by, I don't know if you got it, but it was given to all three commissioners by email. So today I have the claims, and if you've reviewed that list and you're comfortable with the funding, I would ask if you would not only authorize the way the funds will be distributed on behalf of the local drug-free partnership, but also authorize me to stamp Ken's name on the claims to keep him from signing about 30 claims and get them processed yet today for next week's payment.
Have any questions on the allegation? Go ahead, Denny.
Allegation.
Allegation.
Okay.
Chair would so entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
I did.
Okay, call the roll.
Denny Burns. Mary Ann Butters. Ken Pous.
Aye, motion carries.
As Mary Ann mentioned, payroll for April 24th was presented after your meeting last week. Payroll did happen, but we should have an approval after the fact.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion and approve.
Move for approval.
Mary Ann, so moves. Denny Burns, second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Burns. Mrs. Butters. Mr. Pous.
Aye, motion carries.
Wanted to remind you all, about 90 days ago, you passed a resolution saying that take-home cars for the Health Department would cease being take-home cars in 90 days. That day is May 5th next week, so if you would so authorize, I'll send a note to Christine Stinson, reminding her that that date is coming up, and then she can communicate that with her employees, who already know this is happening, they had a 90-day notice.
Right.
So I'll, I'll just go ahead and do that.
Right, that's right.
I think.
We don't need a motion for that.
Yep.
Yeah.
And lastly, Christine Stinson asked to be on your agenda next week, May 6th in the afternoon. She wants to talk about the syringe exchange program and its continuance.
Okay.
So I just wanted to run it by you before I.
To fill you in on that, Christine is going to come in on the syringe exchange program, and so I did make contact with Mike Shipman in the prosecutor's office. If you recall, the last time when we renewed this, Mike was unaware that we were going to renew that, so I wanted him to be fully aware that she was going to come in to talk about the syringe exchange program. Also gave Mike Christine's name as the new executive director, explained the changes that have taken place there, that Eric is no longer, that's a separate organization, and so Mike was going to contact Christine ahead of time, and so that they could have a discussion, and if there was any data or questions that he wanted, Christine said she'd be happy to get that information. So we should have a good discussion on May the 6th on the syringe exchange program. Okay, Beth, do you have anything else?
Okay, I.
Yeah, Mary Ann?
Don't know how much conversation you, Jeff Warren, Christine, about the syringe program, but in very brief conversations, because we occupied so much of their time, so both of them are very supportive and had full knowledge and appreciation for Wayne County's commitment to harm reduction. In fact, Christine was so impressed with how Wayne County had picked up the mantle and was among the eight counties in Indiana, and she said that helped contribute to her attraction to Wayne County, contributed to her decision to make the major move from Plymouth to, to Wayne County. So I'm really pleased that she is of our.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, yeah, excellent, excellent. Okay, Beth, do you have anything else?
I don't.
At this time, we'll take a recess until Steve gets here, and then we'll reconvene again. We'll reconvene this meeting, Wayne County Commissioners. Steve Higginbotham.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning. The project list, it's still moving a little bit slow. Obviously, we still have some obstacles in our way with getting into different parts of the buildings. The Courthouse HVAC project, they're still.
Having trouble with you.
Are you having, tell you, Steve?
Yeah, can't hear it either.
All right, Steve, you're going to have to pick the microphone up and hold it in front of you, then it'll work. That probably won't work there, it didn't for Beth.
Can you hear me now?
Can, can you hear him now?
Just a little bit, a little bit better.
We're going to try you on Ron Cross's, that one seems to work very well.
Imagine that.
Can you hear it?
How about now, can you hear?
Not it, sir.
Hmm.
Can you hear me?
Ron, do you?
Yeah, I can hear you now. All right.
All right, very good.
All right. The Courthouse HVAC project's still having a little bit of difficulty getting that system balanced. Some of the, some of the flows are being restricted by something, so they're having some, slowed down the process, so they thought they'd be done last Friday, but they're still working on, on that. The jail bond project still continues to move slowly forward, still working on the items that are in the maintenance garage and the second floor enforcement division. The contractor did have a meeting yesterday, yesterday with the jail commander to start setting up a schedule of how that might look when they move to the cell blocks, and the jail commander has tentatively given an indication that they'll be able to work in two cell blocks at a time rather than just one, once they finally get there. He thinks that the jail population is such that they'll be able to do two cell blocks at a time.
The courthouse security equipment, we did have a pre-bid meeting this morning, in fact, they, the potential bidders are taking a tour of the buildings right now, and we had five interested entities. We were expecting about three, so that's a good thing. And then no, we're still expecting the bids to come in to the commissioners on May 13th. The, and then there's no change on the Guardian Ed Leitem building. We'll, we're going to give the, hopefully, once the governor, we're anticipating the governor is going to loosen up a little bit as far as being able to move about Friday, and hopefully that'll allow the FSA office to come and move their equipment. The only other thing that I had, we, we received a list of the properties that are going to go into the commissioner's sale. Mary Ann, I think you've got that list as well, and I've gone through it, and everything that the city was interested in has been taken off that list, so I don't have any changes to the advertised list. Have the deeds been issued, if you know? I do not know yet.
Everything Salina sent, Richmond, you moved Brahman O.C.?
All right, yes, everything that City of Richmond wanted Steve said has been removed.
Would she have to send that to the news? I have not gone over it for any errors, sometimes it will patients missing, you know, error that, I'd just like to have eyes on it. I haven't really had an opportunity to print it out, I ran out of ink unfortunately, I'm going to have to see that in hard copy in order to proof it properly, and I ran out of ink, so, um, how long do I have to put my eyes on that before she has to release back to the newspaper?
Well, I.
There is a schedule, but I don't have that in front of me. Steve, do you have it in front of you with some dates?
I don't, I'll go ask her real quick.
We'll, we'll find out, Mary Ann. Would you want us to bail you a hard copy today?
No, I, I'm going to have to bring those thermometers in. I'm feeling there's something about this being in session that has given me a, do a, at least I feel 100% better than I did at 9:30, so I'm going to bring those thermometers in, and I think I'll be at that 1:30 meeting.
Mary Ann?
I'm going to miss that departmental meeting.
Mary Ann, I would suggest, this is two, this is two weeks in a row for you. Mary Ann, I would suggest you stay at home, this is two weeks in a row, we don't need to take any chance whatsoever that you need to stay at home, we will survive another week, and you may be feeling a little better.
If we were to print that list out, when someone delivers those thermometers, you could play an exchange of the, the list, I'll trade you four thermometers for a list, how's that?
All right, I'll, I'll have it at the security station.
Thermometers, I can't throw each of the thermometers.
Right, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
We just don't want to take any chances whatsoever, yes.
Hopefully, I'll drop highway department.
Okay.
Because I've been promising Mike a thermometer for a long time.
Mike's doing pretty well, yeah.
Hopefully, there's been a cat fight going on, can you hear that?
Right, no, no, we can't hear the cat fight, no.
I'll drop off thermometers, and you can read the list, I'd actually appreciate it.
Okay, we'll have it there in an envelope, and, and we'll sanitize the outside of the thermometers that you're bringing in.
Read the list.
Okay, it'll be there, all right. Beth, anything else?
I have nothing.
Yeah, I've got, there's more coming, and I've got, we're delivered.
Okay.
We're trying to get them away, they are scared, everybody's trying to pull up, and every, no touch thermometers in order to open up business and offices.
Right, right, very good. Okay, that's it, if there isn't anything else, we'll recess at this time, so we'll have everything there at the security counter for you, Mary Ann. Okay.
Oh, one thing, Salina asked if we wanted to advertise the deep shell properties in Richmond as well as the, being there.
And we said yes.
Because I felt that commissioners want to have property as well as what's in Wayne.
That's correct.
I hope you can, I, I said I thought that was the, the, to agree.
Yeah, we'll, we'll pass that on again to her in case.
Okay.
She didn't get that info, yeah.
If Steve can carry that message back, is Steve still there?
Yeah, Peter, we're hearing you. We will, we will pass that on.
Bob Warner had a question for us, I think we need to get back to him regarding the economy room bridge and the one and three-quarter inch gap. I think we need to concur with Bob that we don't want to incur great expense over one and three-quarter inch. I think we need to get back to him and let him know our feelings on that. It's my feeling that that one and three-quarter inch is not worth the expense to correct.
That's correct.
That is his feeling, that it's not very discernible, we need to go forward without spending a lot of money to correct that minor discrepancy.
Yes, Mary, Mary Ann, just send an email back to Bob saying that you agree, I already sent him one saying that I agreed that it wasn't going to make that much difference.
I think he's going to get a comfort letter from the, from the, from the design firms that it would not. I think he's gonna get a comfort letter from the design firms that it would not have any function.
I think we just collectively agree that that minor discrepancy, maybe it could be dealt with with landscaping or something that will not be discernible to the naked eye.
We all agree, yes. Okay. Danny, you got anything?
No, I do not.
Okay. All righty. Thank you both. Appreciate it. And we'll work on these phones.
I just talked to the board this afternoon. We won't be making policies this afternoon because the governor's going to have your announcement on Friday, May 1st.
No, Mary Ann, we're not...
The governor's announcement is going to be on Friday before we make policy. You should agree.
Mary Ann, we're not making any policies this afternoon. We're just having a general discussion for employees to bring up any ideas they have, like the sneeze guards and stuff like that that they're interested in. That's all we're gonna do this afternoon. So we're not making any policies or any votes on anything.
I did respond to the request. We wanted to follow the construction and carpentry. I did respond to her saying that we really were not interested in making permanent construction at time, such as going through the building, that nothing permanent interest is needed to happen.
Right, I did see your email back to her on that.
That would be temporary for dirt control at this point. I did respond to her bids that we were not making bids for construction, that we were looking to provide temporary control at this point. I thought I did not have.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
The only thing, policy just not interested in taking this for construction for this temporary move at this time. I hope that was okay.
That's fine. Yeah, that was good.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's only policy kind of thing I responded to, but I'm really glad that we're having this meeting to let... Let them express the... We're just going to take comments and listen to that, but I think my feeling, I listened to the governor yesterday, is that I think he's going to do quite a lot of relaxing of shelter at home guidelines. I really appreciate the... Our hospitals are... He's a really capable manager, and I tend to be going to do a lot of patients on Friday.
Well, I think you're probably accurate. We'll just have to wait and see what the governor says, and then we can react to that once we know exactly what he's going to suggest. Yes.
But I think we have to take what he's doing on Friday before we can obviously tell he can't take independent action. It will be on what he's taking on Friday.
That's correct. We can always take a stronger reaction than what he suggests. County can always do that. Yes. Anything else? Okay, thank you. To explain to you what she was talking about on there, we had two of our departments that already had sent in some suggestions to us about sneeze guards for their particular department, and so we asked them if they could get some information. And so those departments did go out. They got some information for us on different types of sneeze guards and got a couple of bids from a couple of folks if we did a custom sneeze guard in their particular, and that's what she was talking about, and that she had sent an email back to them telling them that we were not interested in permanent construction in an area for a sneeze guard on there, that at this time, we were looking to do something temporarily on that, and that's what she was talking about on there. And the other part of what she was talking about is the fact that the AARP phone call that she was on, the state of Indiana, which we were already aware of that, is gonna provide adequate PPE equipment for all the voter folks that are working at the polls for us, and we were certainly aware that that was going to happen on there. And so that's what she... I'm sorry you couldn't hear on that. If I didn't know what she was talking about, I couldn't have heard it either, but that's what it is, yes. So, any other things, Steve, Beth?
No.
No? No. Okay, that's it. We'll recess till 1:30. But let me first go back to a few things. The sheet that I passed out to you, and for those that are on the telephone, I passed out an information sheet that I thought, depending how close you follow the COVID-19, as to what has transpired over the time. And on this sheet, as you can see, there's been 56 major disaster declarations across the United States, and I won't read all of this. You can take it with you. You can see how much money, the $5.7 billion, and the 89 air bridge flights, and I'll talk about the air bridge flights in a little bit here. But the interesting part to me has been the critical supplies and how many have been shipped. And on your sheet, if you look at the face shields, there've been 7.2 million of the face shields that have been shipped around the United States, and the surgical masks, 107.2 million of the surgical masks, and 626,863 coveralls, and 811.9 million gloves, and 76.5 of the N95 recitators, and 15.3 million in gallons. And the testing, 5.4 million, and the ventilators, and I'll talk a little more about ventilators, 11,327 that are available, and then the National Guard troops, they're spread out across the United States, almost 37,000. To me, I thought those statistics were interesting as to what happened, and as you look at the ventilators, there's been a lot of discussion about ventilators, a lot of what the New York folks were looking for. At one time, the governor there was looking for some 30,000 ventilators for the New York area over there. Now, let's talk for a moment about how do we get the supplies here, what we have done. We're a prime example. We have ordered quite a few things, and we're still waiting to get those in. We've got one of our shipments in the other day, but I wanted to talk briefly about Project Air Bridge, which you may or may not be aware of, but they have 110 flights that are scheduled on the Project Air Bridge. This is all being handled by FEMA. The president authorized FEMA to coordinate this throughout the United States and also coordinate it with manufacturers and promotional products distributors that sell products like you see here, that sell the hand sanitizers as well as the masks. So far, they've completed 89 of these flights. Now, the interesting part about that is, as all of you know, everything's coming from Japan currently at this time. I'm sorry, I said Japan. I don't mean China. And it's taken a long time for it to get here. So what FEMA did, they went in and did the coordination with this air bridge and coordinated all the flights. Each flight is carrying 80 tons of PPE equipment, and those flights are scheduled throughout the United States. And let's say one of the flights comes into Chicago, or one of the flights may come into Columbus. When those supplies arrive, 50/50, 50 goes to the strategic stockpile, and FEMA in turn determines where the hotspots are throughout the United States, and those supplies then are shipped to those individual cities or towns. The other 50% goes to the manufacturer, a person that may be selling promotional products, or a medical house that would be selling the gloves, and it's distributed in their particular area. And I thought that was quite interesting, and the real interesting part, that cut eight weeks out of the supply chain. Now, just think about that. By coordinating that and doing that, they cut eight weeks out. So if I think of the time when I worked with Matthew and John to order our supplies here, it'd be sometime the end of July if we had to go through the normal process where we'd ever begin to see some of this stuff come in. So I thought this was interesting. If you didn't know about it, I thought you would like to know about that. Each one of those flights, which are paid for by FEMA, costs $750,000 to $800,000 per flight, depending on the equipment that's in the PPE and how much it weighs. So when you think about that, it's $800,000 just to get that equipment here sooner. Yesterday, for example, they had flights that came into JFK, Chicago, and Washington, and they have a team at FEMA that works on the distribution throughout the United States, and every 96 hours, they update all the hotspots throughout the United States. So when one of these flights arrives that's scheduled, then they know exactly where the distribution's going to be and where they're going to send it. And on that information I gave you about ventilators, 11,327 of those that are available now, the Strategic National Stockpile has 10,245 of those. Department of Defense has 1,082. If you look up and you look at the stats, Indiana received 100 ventilators from the National Strategic Stockpile, and I thought that was quite interesting. Also, I looked up on the Indiana site to see exactly how many ventilators we had here in the state of Indiana, and we actually have 3,189 ventilators here in the state of Indiana. We currently are using, for people that we know have COVID, 8.2 of those ventilators and 11.9 in ventilators that are non-COVID. So roughly, we have 79.9% of our ventilators are still available in the state of Indiana. So I think that's nice to know, that we certainly have a stockpile if the situation gets even worse here in Indiana, which I'm hoping it does not. So, you know, as you look at all that, and you look at what's going to happen, and what did we do here? As all of you know, we reduced our workforce by 30%, and with your cooperation, we sent folks home to work from home. In doing that, I think we've learned what we can and can't do from home. And in some cases, I was talking with Debbie Rice in the recorder's office yesterday, and she said, "You know, Ken, we've gotten so good at this, if we never came back into the office, we'd have everything recorded that needed to be recorded." And, you know, if we'd asked that maybe a year ago, or even two months ago, we'd probably say, "Well, we can't do that," but we did, and I watched what the probation department did, as they had their folks all to check in, the tent they set up out on the parking lot, thinking out of the box and not bringing any of the folks into the facility here. My biggest concern has always been the safety and the health of every one of our county employees, and all of those of you that have to come into the office every day. As you know, if we only got one person that got in here that really got the COVID-19, it would be possible that you would have to shut this entire facility down. We certainly do not want to do that. So we're taking all the necessary steps that we can think of to be able to make sure that you're safe, and anybody that comes in that you schedule an appointment with is safe also. So the closing of the annex and the closing of the courthouse, with the exception of appointments only, has been very, very successful. And I'm sure, as Christine talks to you a little later on, they'll certainly emphasize that what we've been able to do in the stay-at-home and only do essential travel has been very, very important, and it really has worked out for us. So that gives you a little bit of where we are and how we got to where we are today. So let's look at the future as to what is going to happen. We know that the governor's gonna make some changes on Friday, and we'll begin to look at that. But at the same time, we'll look at Wayne County, Indiana, and determine what we need to do in Wayne County. My worst fear is that we would open things up too soon and get people in here that would infect some of our staff, and that we'd have a real problem within our facility. So some of the things that we've been looking at and talking to you folks about is that the individual needs to monitor their health, and you need to keep the social distancing to the six feet that we have talked about, and this is nothing new. We've been talking about that. The hand washing, that you should wash your hands. If you don't have access to water, use the 60% plus alcohol, using the hand rubs as often as possible. And if you have the slightest feeling that you're not feeling well, or you feel sick, that you stay at home. We had a case just like this this morning, where an individual was not feeling well, that got feeling a little better mid-morning, and said, "Oh, I'm gonna come in to work this afternoon." I insisted that that person not come in this afternoon, that they stay at home, because we don't wanna take the chances. You all know, people can be asymptomatic, and for four or five days, you could be affecting other folks, which you don't want to do, and you could feel perfectly well. So we need to be very, very careful. Covering your mouth, as you can see, all of us today are covering our mouths in here, and at the same time, we're staying six or seven feet apart, and that is helping. Cleaning the workplaces. I can't say enough about the employees prior to the time that we got the first wipes and the spray. A lot of the employees, I know Kathy Williams out of the treasurer's office, and their people went out, and she was able to get a lot of supplies, that they were using their own supplies to keep the counter and the desk and the things that they were touching clean and safe for their employees. And we've tried to discourage employees from touching or using other things from one of your coworkers on there. Don't pick up their pencils, or don't go over to their desk, don't pick things up off of their desk. These are all the things that we want to be emphasizing to do. Taking of the temperatures, as you know, when we first started out, we took the temperature from all of our employees as that they came into the door. Those folks that have appointments in the different offices were taking the temperature and having them wash their hands with the alcohol wipe on there. And many of the things I'm talking about here today, we'll be putting into writing, so that when we bring the full staff back in, we'll probably have something similar to a question and answer, where we have questions, and we'll have the answers down as to what do you do. HR has a lot of different things that they will be responsible for, and questions that we're beginning to get now from some individuals on there. Also, the masks, as we said, we will be providing masks. We'll have those, I'm sure, by the time we open back up in the future. So everybody will have masks be available, and we'll certainly be encouraging you when you leave the building here and you're outside that you wear those masks at all the time. And to continue using video conferencing and telephone calls, similar to what we're doing today, so we do not have a lot of folks in meetings. We're also looking, we've been working with Kathy and Deborah and Debbie in their three offices about sneeze screens, and what is the best but most effective way to do that, a full screen across or workstations on there. So we're looking at that. All three of them have been very helpful to us in providing companies that are providing this. In Debbie and Kathy's case, they had had a person come in to give us some cost on customizing some sneeze guards for those particular individuals. Disinfecting on a weekly basis, one of the things when we bring back all of our staff, what we'll be doing towards the end of the week, will be completely between the courthouse and the annex will go through disinfecting the entire premise all the way through. That doesn't mean that during the week, you don't need to continue what you've been doing in keeping your counters clean and practicing all the different policies that we should do. We'll have in place there for you what you do if you find one of your folks is having a little temperature, or you think they might not be feeling well. Exactly what do you do? We'll have that on the answer sheets, so you know exactly. Of course, you know what you're gonna wanna do. You're gonna isolate them, and you're gonna wanna send them home right away, so they can't possibly infect anybody else. Mary Ann has been working, trying to secure infrared thermometers for us. She brought several in today. We will, by the time we open back up, we will have infrared thermometers for every office. So you will have thermometers in your office so that anytime during the day, you can take temperatures. We'll be recommending to you that you take them in the morning. take temperatures, and we'll be recommending to you that you take them in the morning, and again, in the afternoon, will be some of the things we'll be suggesting that you do on there. The other thing that you need to be concerned about is the mental health of all of our employees. This is a stressful time for a lot of folks. Some handle the stress different than other folks handle it. All of you are aware of the new avenues program that we have in place. We'll be emphasizing that, putting the phone numbers out, that if your folks have a certain stress, it could be financial, it could be something else, that this is available to them, that they'll be able to utilize this service. The other thing is, when are we going to reopen? We know that there's going to be a lot of questions about that. We'll know better after we hear what the governor has to say on Friday, but at the same time, we can be more restrictive than what the governor says. So we'll look at that, and we'll be looking at where we are and where we're on the chart. If you follow the chart that's in there, you'll notice that we're still climbing like this. We haven't leveled off, we're still kind of going up here in Wayne County. If you watch TV last night, you'll see that they are now going to open 20 new testing sites. And depending exactly how these sites work, it could be very, very beneficial to us, because we could do more testing in the area. Richmond was fortunate to be one of 20 of the new testing sites, and they hope to do 30,000 tests per week. And so that's going to be very, very important. Also, the turnaround on those tests is going to be 48 hours. So we'll get a response back very quickly on an individual. So that'll give you kind of a little background of where we are, what we're thinking about, what we're looking at. And we don't have all the answers at this time, but we're trying to put them together that when we do open up, that we'll be able to give you kind of a working sheet like this, with all the questions that we can think of and the answers, whether they're in the HR department, or whether they're on the medical side, that you'll be able to give that to all your employees on there, which can be very helpful in some of the questions that they may have as they begin to come back. But what we will do, in consultation with Christine and with Dr. Jepmore, we will look at all of our numbers to make a determination as to how quickly we will call our people back. And we'll certainly give each of you department heads information and a little advance notice as to when we're going to do that. We're not just going to give you a phone call and say, "We're all coming back tomorrow morning at 8:00." So you'll have enough notice to get out to all your folks to let them know that we will be returning into this area. I do anticipate, though, that Kathy in the Treasurer's Office has done a real good job. We've chatted about this, and we may disagree a little bit. I'm sure she'd like to have it open, so the annex open, so that the folks could get in tentatively at this time. We're not looking to open the annex up, only by appointment for folks that may have, in her particular case, some question about a tax bill. She's done an excellent job in getting Wayne Bank, as well as First Bank Richmond, to be able to take payments for property taxes. And the property taxes are due now, folks. I know there has been a delay, but we would appreciate it if you would go ahead and pay your taxes, because we do need those dollars to be able to function and operate in county government. So not only do we have those facilities, and those banks also have branches out Cambridge City and different places, so it's more convenient, you do not need to come into this office to pay your taxes. At the same time, if you'd love to come down here, see Kathy looked it up, and we have this nice brown mailbox out in our south parking lot of the annex, which you can drive right up to it, pull the handle down, and put your payment right in there, it's all taken care of, and your canceled check will come back as your receipt. So they've done an excellent job in making it as convenient as possible for you to be able to pay your taxes. So what I'd like to do at this time is to kind of open it up for any discussions or questions medically that you might have. Christine, I'm sure will have some facts and numbers that she would like to give to you. I know in the last few days, we've had some HR questions that are beginning to pick up. I can say, you know, we haven't had any for a while, and now, all of a sudden, we're starting to get questions from employees on there. So we'll do that, or I can have Christine make a few comments first. Christine, why don't you, do you have any quick comments you'd like to?
I can tell you that cases across Indiana are still climbing at a slower rate than what we saw kind of in the surge. Wayne County has done a good job about keeping our numbers relatively low in comparison. When you look at our numbers compared to our surrounding communities, we're still one of the lowest counties at 5.5 per 10,000 residents of Wayne County. If you look to some of our others, they're 18, 17. So we've done a good job, and the state, though, starting Thursday, last Thursday, has started to allow clinical diagnosis of COVID to be reported. So when you look at the Indiana dashboard, you'll see the cases in Indiana are 36. So that's how many laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19 of Wayne County residents. But we've been woefully under testing in Indiana, and so now they've allowed these clinical diagnoses. They haven't made those public yet, but I will tell you, just yesterday, I got 18 clinically diagnosed cases of COVID-19 and two laboratory confirmed. So there is a lot of COVID out in the community, and we like to explain to people when we're talking to people that you should interact with anyone as if they are COVID positive and shedding the virus. I wear this mask to protect you, and I would appreciate it if you would wear the mask to protect me. When you look at transmission rates, when people are wearing masks, when both people are wearing the mask, your transmission rate drops to about 1.3%, where if just the person who's not COVID positive wears a mask, you have about a 70% transmission rate. So while we're in this phase of this disease, it's important that all of us are wearing masks when we're having interactions, whether it's at a grocery store, at work, when we do open back up, we'll all be having masks on when we're outside of our office. So each one of us that has an individual office won't have to wear the mask when we're there by ourself, but when there's interaction, we'll be wearing masks. Not sure what else you want me to go?
That's good. I might mention one of the things that we looked at, as we started to look at when we opened back up here, what is our exposure to COVID-19? If you look on the charts, you have low, medium, high, and very high. We're very fortunate that we're in the low category, and so that's good. And so as we look at different responses that we do, basically, what OSHA and all the folks say for us is to keep your distance, wash your hands, and wear your masks, is basically what they tell us to do in our category of low. But at the same time, I look at the chart on the demographics by age, and on the 50 to 59, it's one of the highest rates, which is 19.4, and 60 to 69 is 19.4 also, folks that have been infected. So, you know, that kind of fits into the age area that we are here, but just by the fact that we're on the low side, I still take that very seriously as we look at all the different things that we're trying to do to make it safe for you, as well as our employees when we bring them back. So do I have some questions? I know there's been a lot of concerns, a lot of talking. Anything specific that you might like to bring up, that you want us to check up or look for, or something we haven't thought about, any suggestions you might have? Like I said, Kathy, Debbie, and Debbie have brought concerns to us about the sneeze guards. We're working on that, we're looking at all that. Situation's different for Debbie Berry over in the Clerk's Office than it is for Debbie in the Recorder's Office, and it's different for Kathy in the Treasurer's Office, due to the wide expanse that the Treasurer has versus what the Recorder has. Debbie kind of has more the bank teller with her counters he has. So that's different, and we're working on that, and we certainly will have all of those in place with something before we bring folks back in. So I'm sure there's got to be some questions out there, either some HR. Yes, Deborah?
This is Sheriff Randy Redder.
Yes, Sheriff.
My question is, I know that about a week ago, you were trying to acquire some testing, possibly for use for staff. I didn't know if you'd made any progress with that or not.
Not at this time. We're still working on that. It's possible with these new testing sites that they're setting up. We don't know what the parameter is on that, so at the moment, we're still on hold on that, Randy.
I think for the 20 sites, you still have to be symptomatic.
Oh, really? Okay. All right. You can be assured that if, once tests are available, we'll do our best to get them in.
Sure. If you'd like to contact me later, I may have a possible resource for that.
Okay, be happy to do that. Deborah from the Recorder's Office.
Is there any thought on keeping the west door locked, so that people are just going to be coming through the south door when we do open up?
We have talked about that.
We'll have to repeat that, I'm sure they can't.
Her question was, when we open back up, are we going to keep all the doors closed with only the south entrance being open? And we have been discussing that early on, prior to COVID-19, for security purposes. Our goal was to get our new security officer in place first, and he is here, Doug, Officer Bullock, and we've got him now set up with a nice desk out in there, and we're tentatively looking at the possibility that when we open back up, that we would not open that door, Deborah, but we haven't made that decision yet. Yes, sir?
We know that masks are one of the best protections. Are you looking at setting a policy that staff and visitors would wear a mask while in the building?
The question was that are we going to require staff, as well as visitors, to wear masks in the office at all times? And the answer to that, at this point, we've made no decision on that. Tentatively, what I've been doing, when I get into my office, I take my mask off, but if somebody comes in to talk to me, or I leave it, I kind of put it on, because I'll run into people in the hallway or something like that. We haven't made that decision, we will be making a recommendation on that, though.
The Health Department would support a policy that had everyone wearing masks.
Okay. Kathy?
I just have a quick question. We have public terminals in our area, and I know I've mentioned to Steve about moving those out in the hallway, so are you making a list so that you could move any of that type of thing all at the same time, rather than, "I want this, and Terrell needs something, and Debbie needs something," and so we can try to keep those public terminals out of our office area?
We do, anybody that says anything to us, Steve and I put on our list, and we do have your two terminals on our list. I can tell you right now, basically, if we look at that, we're not leaning to putting those terminals out into the hallway and having folks out into the hallway on there, but we haven't made a final decision on that. We've looked at where you have those in your office, and depending on the folks that utilize those, there certainly is the six to seven-foot space between where you have your closest desk and where somebody would be working there, but we haven't made a final decision on that yet, Kathy, but it's on our list. And we'd have that done prior to opening the building up if we were going to do it.
Ken?
Yes, sir. Roger?
If you could repeat the questions of the people in the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry. The question was from the Treasurer. She has a computer in her office with, clients will come in, and it's in probably 10 feet from where the counter is on the east side of her office. She's looking at the possibility of moving those computers out into the hallway, and having the folks that would use them out in the hallway. That was her question, and it is on our list to look at. Tentatively in looking at it, we were not leaning towards doing that, putting offices out into the hallway. Another question. I'll let you think about it a second, and I'll call on HR, and she can mention a couple of the things that we've been getting some questions on.
Previously, I sent out an email around the 1st of April regarding the Family Medical Leave Act and the expansion on that, so I just want to remind you, I am receiving some activity on that from the employees. It is Family Medical Leave Act, it is HIPAA protected, and it really needs to flow through HR as any other FMLA event or request. So please, have your employees give me a call, because each situation needs to be dealt with on an individual basis. I also, part of this expansion is for the Emergency Family Medical Leave will be for childcare. There's some guidelines regarding childcare, and I'm dealing with one right now. So we're going through that exercise and seeing if that individual qualifies on what's going on with their individual issue. But I did place a call to the Richmond YMCA today, because there is a childcare program that is available. It originally was for, on the medical side, more Reed employees. It has now been opened up to essential employees, so we do qualify for that. The age is four to 12. It is at the Richmond YMCA, South J Street. The fee is $75. I do have a flyer, or if you have an employee, encourage them to Google Richmond YMCA. Go to their website, and there is an enrollment packet that must be filled out. It's about five or six pages long, but there is childcare that is available for the employees of Wayne County. So do you have any questions regarding the family medical leave and how that works, or any issues? Just please contact me.
I would say, don't hesitate if you have an idea or a question. Give me a call, stop me in the hallway, whatever, let us know. Any ideas, whatever you might have, like Kathy, Debbie, and both DeBby's have done to us, so that we can begin to do the research we need to do, to look at the different items that are available, and how we can do that, and how long it'll take us to get it all in place and everything. So I'm sure maybe when you leave today, you'll think of something, so send us an email on that, so that we can begin now to look at that. And so, nothing else you can think of? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
This is Roger.
Yeah, Roger.
Do you have a list, do we have a list in the county of what establishes essential personnel?
A list as such, no.
I think as we move forward, bringing back people, a list of essential personnel that need to be on duty would be helpful, especially with the HR questions as far as who establishes essential personnel, and who are they?
Okay. I've got that. Thank you. Anybody else? Anything at all? Nothing, nothing. Yes, Kathy?
Kathy, a quick question is maybe for?
Just a minute. Kathy, go ahead.
Maybe for Christine, the benches that are out here that are upholstered, are those an issue with public sitting on those and getting up, and should those maybe be moved in just some plastic chairs or metal chairs put in the hallways for the time being, once we open to the public?
All right. Her- All right. Her question is, the benches that we have in the hallway that are cloth-covered, whether or not those should be removed so that nobody can sit on those? And she kind of asked Christine that.
Yeah. A good question. It's a respiratory disease. It probably would. I mean, plastic would be better. They could be easier sanitized, you know, throughout the day. But I don't know how much transmission you would have on those benches, that they would be considered a high priority thing to move. I don't know how much people, I'm not in this building enough to know.
During tax time, we have a lot of people that sit on those.
Do you?
Yes. A lot of elderly people like that, so I'm hoping that, you know.
I'm hoping the elderly stay home and don't come out when we open it.
You're probably not going to find those elderly folks in here unless you've set up an appointment with them, Kathy, would be my guess.
Oh, they want to come, I will tell you. They call us every day. Are you open yet? They want to come and pay their taxes.
You should suggest to those folks that they go to one of the branches at the bank or to use your box out there, that they don't need to come inside.
Yeah. I would really, really encourage the elderly to use a different form than coming into public buildings. Even if we open up the, you know, establishments and the malls and all of this stuff, even when we opened up the lobbies to the restaurants, does that mean that that's a good thing to do? If I go and there's seven people in a lobby, I'm not going to go in there because I know how it's transmitted, you know? So just because things are opened back up doesn't mean we want the community to flock out there. These should only be essential. There's no other option, especially for an elderly person, to come in here. There's got to be a better way to service the most vulnerable in our community, and coming into these public buildings is not the best option for them.
Yes?
Kind of on that front, when this first started, the first week or two, as we were still seeing probation clients before the sort of the building restriction, we basically categorized everything that we did from clerical duties to seeing probation clients to court as to critical matters, meaning things that could not be dealt with outside of a face-to-face interaction, non-critical, and then just non-essential, things that could kind of be put on a shelf. I would almost encourage government or the buildings to look at something similar that we can all operate under some parameters as to what things can a person only do in a building if not only just, again, to kind of extend us out past this situation that we're in.
The speaker was Corey George from the probation department. He talked about in their office how they had critical things that only could be done in the office, those that could be done outside the office, and that it would be a good idea for us to establish some parameters for the whole county. They might vary by individual offices. I can see a difference in Corey's. I could see a difference in Kathy's, in the treasurer's office. And as you have folks trying to check tax bills, you have the treasurer, you've got the auditor and the assessor, that all three get involved in that. So it could be different, but I think that's a good idea, Corey.
Ken, this is Chuck Todd. I had a question. You alluded to earlier that you intended to give us, you intended to give us a heads-up, not just like call us and, hey, the next day, we're opening back up to the public business as usual. Do you anticipate any kind of timeframe of trying to give us what you think you'll give us timeframe-wise to know when we're to try to shift and go back into not the percentages you provided us to try to have our workforce at in those things? Would that be something that you would look to give us, for example, at least a week notice?
Well, I would hope to be able to give you a two-week notice, Chuck. Two weeks in advance as to what we're going to do. You know, as this changes and we meet Dr. Jepmore, Christine, and myself, and the mayor, and usually Reed Hospital, as we get together and talk about where are we at this point, and as we try and look down the road, my goal would be to give you at least a two-week notice, and I know for the court's scheduling and everything, even that's a short period of time for you. But that would be my goal, to be able to give you at least two weeks before we start really moving things or changing some things.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Kim? Okay. Christine, anything else you can think of? Why don't you, while we're on TV, promote your mask giveaway that you've got coming up?
Yeah.
Look right into the camera there and tell them what you've got coming up.
Hello. I'm Christine. Saturday, we are doing a mask giveaway for the community as we kind of are expecting the governor to open up some parts of the economy soon, if not this weekend, you know, pretty soon. So we've had a lot of masks donated to the Health Department, and we thought that this would be, we could kill a lot of birds with this one stone by giving away these masks. First of all, we can let the public know how to get to the Health Department, because where is the Health Department? We're 100 South Fifth Street, right at the corner of A and Fifth. You'll find the Health Department, and in our parking lot, we're going to have a drive-through mask giveaway, and that's from 10:00 AM to 11:00, or 10:00 AM to 1:00.
Okay. Yeah, 10 to 1:00.
But you can check our Facebook page and find those exact times, because you caught me on the spot here, and I've got a lot going on, and so if those times are wrong.
10 to 1:00.
That was right. All right, 10 to 1:00. So it did a few things. It allowed us to exercise the capability of, would it be feasible to do a drive-through testing site or inoculation or what have you at that place? So we're going to be doing some test runs of setting up different things. It allowed us to exercise our communications. So the Health Department reached out to the EMA. We reached out to the county dispatch, or the county sheriffs, and the Richmond Police. And so it's a coordinated effort of watching all of these groups interact together and how we can do traffic flows and a lot of things. So from 10 to 1:00 on Saturday, the mask will be limited, so it will be, as soon as the masks are done, we'll be out of mask and the clinic will shut down.
Okay. Very good. Any last comments anybody wants to make or anything? If not, I thank you all for coming. If you have any suggestions, any ideas, anything, certainly send them in to us. Send us an email, call me, or stop me. Let us know. We're welcome any suggestions or ideas that you have so we can begin to get ready for when we do open. The time is coming, and we are going to be opening, it's just a matter of when. That's going to happen. So thank you all for coming. Thank you for calling in on the phone also. And if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn by general consent.